Alright, we can get started. Welcome to the January twenty-second meeting of the City of Newburgh IDA. It is six thirty-eight PM and we have a quorum so we can get started with roll call.
So we have present, we have Ally Church, Mike Nipple, Sean LaTao, Gregory Nato, Chris DiNato, Adrian Monalaya, myself, Sherry Fickers, our attorney, Bob McLaughlin, and our consultant who is here to speak on the reports that we're going to be analyzing tonight, Connor from MRB Group.
Great, thank you. I see we have a proof of notice, so the meeting has been properly noticed. So we'll move to item three on the agenda. We have a public hearing for one oh four Washington Street LLC for the consideration of financial assistance of a pilot, mortgage recording tax exemption, and sales tax exemption.
Yes, so hello everybody, I'm going to be reading script. And afterwards then we'll have the presentation by the developer, then by the consultant, and then we'll open up the floor to the public.
Can I ask a question? There are public comment on each individual project, not public comment on both projects as well?
Correct, on each individual because I'll read the same script and we'll do this whole process all over again for the second project, which is four what we'll be discussing on the first one, which is one oh four Washington Street Liberty Street Apartments. And then the show that they would choose there is part of our general meeting, which is in the later part of the agenda. Alright, so good evening, my name is Sherry Fickers and I am the executive director to the City of Newburgh Industrial Development Agency in connection with the project, which is the subject of this public hearing. Today I'm holding this public hearing to allow citizens to make a statement for the record relating to the involvement of the agency with the project for the benefit of one oh four Washington Street LLC and a New York Limited Liability Company. The proposed project consists of the following. A, the acquisition of an interest in approximately five thousand square foot parcel of real property located at one oh four Washington Street, Newburgh, New York, which is called the land. Two, the construction of the land of improvements consisting of an office or retail space with approximately fourteen residential units plus eight thousand square feet for commercial spaces or units with facilities. And three, the acquisition and installation therein and thereon of related fixtures, machinery, equipment, and other tangible personal property. Collectively, the equipment, the land, the facility, and the equipment hereinafter collectively referred to as the project facility. B, the granting of certain financial assistance within the meaning of section eight point thirteen of the Act with respect to the foregoing, including potential exemptions from certain sales, alias taxes, real property taxes, real estate transfer taxes, and mortgage reporting taxes. Collectively, the financial assistance. And C, the lease with an obligation to purchase or sale of the project facility to the company or such other person as may be designated by the company and agreed upon by the agency. I intend to provide general information on the agency's authority and public purpose to provide assistance to this proposed project. I will then open the common period to receive comments from all present who wish to comment on either the proposed project or the financial assistance contemplated by the agency with respect to the proposed project. Legal authorization of powers of the agency. City of Newburgh Industrial Development Agency. The agency is authorized and empowered by provisions of chapter one zero three zero of the nineteen sixty-nine laws of New York, constituting title one of article eighteen A of the General Municipal Law, chapter twenty-four of the Consolidated Laws of New York as amended, the Enabling Act, and chapter five seven seven of the nineteen eighty-two laws of New York as amended, constituting section nine one three of said General Municipal Law. Said chapter and the Enabling Act being there, being hereinafter collectively referred to as the Act. Purpose of this public hearing. To persistent or pursuant to section eight fifty-nine A two of the Act prior to the agency providing any financial assistance as defined in the Act of more than one hundred thousand dollars to any project, the agency, among other things, must hold a public hearing, public hearing pursuant to section eight five nine A of the Act with respect to said project. Since the proposed financial assistance to be provided by the agency with respect to the proposed project may exceed a hundred thousand dollars, then prior to providing any financial assistance as defined in the Act of more than one hundred thousand dollars to the proposed project, the agency must hold a public hearing on the nature and location of the project facility and proposed financial assistance to be provided by the agency with respect to the proposed project. The company has requested the following financial assistance. A, thirty, a thirty-year payment in lieu of tax agreement or pilot at an estimated value of two million three hundred fifty-seven thousand one hundred forty-seven dollars. B, an exemption for mortgage reporting taxes at an estimated value of fifteen thousand two hundred thirty-eight dollars. And C, an exemption for New York State sales and compensating these taxes at an estimated value of one hundred and thirty-three thousand one hundred eighty-four dollars. It is noted that the requested pilot is not consistent with the adopted uniform tax exempt policy of the agency. The agency has previously engaged a third-party municipal services firm, MRB Group, which assessed the proposed project and developed a written cost-benefit analysis which identified the following economic impact and benefits to the City of Newburgh from the proposed project. A, the construction phase of the project will create forty-one indirect and indirect jobs that will generate approximately two million one hundred sixteen thousand seven dollars in wages. B, the project will result in fifteen ongoing jobs earning approximately nine hundred thirty-nine thousand nine hundred forty dollars in wages on an annual basis. C, Orange County will benefit from an additional one-time sales tax revenue of thirteen thousand eight hundred eighty-six dollars associated with construction wages earned during the construction phase, an additional sales tax revenue of three hundred eighteen dollars, one hundred forty, three hundred eighteen thousand one hundred forty-two dollars related to new wages earned from permanent jobs, an additional sales tax revenue of five hundred eleven thousand seven hundred ninety-five dollars related to new household spending. D, over the course of thirty-two years, the project will generate an increase of three hundred twenty-four thousand five hundred and seventy-four dollars in additional property tax revenue on the current taxes for Orange County, the City of Newburgh, and the Newburgh enlarged city school district. In addition, part of the financial assistance requested by the company includes a request to the agency, the pilot request, to enter into a payment in lieu of tax agreement, the proposed pilot agreement, the terms of which will deviate from the existing agency uniform tax exempt policy. Pursuant to section eight hundred and seventy-four four of the Act and in accordance with the policy, prior to taking final action of the pilot request for a deviation from the policy, the agency must adopt a resolution setting forth with respect to the proposed deviation. A, the amount of the proposed tax exemption. B, the amount and nature of the proposed pilot. And C, indicating the reasons for the proposed deviation. At its regular meeting held on December sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, the agency approved a letter setting forth and writing the reasons for deviation from such policy and notifying by certified mail a return receipt requested or an electronic correspondence with a red receipt the affected global taxing jurisdictions of the proposed deviation from the policy and reasons therefore. This hearing is also available to hear public comments from those affecting global taxing jurisdictions regarding the proposed deviation from the policy. The executive director of the agency caused notice of this public hearing to be A mailed on January sixth, twenty twenty-five to the executive offices of Orange County, the City of Newburgh, and the Newburgh enlarged city school district. B, published on December twenty-second, twenty twenty-four in the Times Herald Record Newspaper of General Circulation available to the residents of City of Newburgh, Orange County, New York. In addition, the executive director of the agency also caused notice of this public hearing to be posted on December nineteenth, twenty twenty-four on the agency's website and on a public bulletin board located at City Hall, eighty-three Broadway, Newburgh, New York. Also, C, the executive director posted a notice of the public hearing to the agency's Facebook page and Instagram account on January fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. Additionally, the executive director of the agency caused a letter notifying about the proposed deviation from the uniform tax exempt policy of the agency to be mailed by certified mail a return receipt requested or an electronic correspondence with a red receipt on January sixth, twenty twenty-five to the chief executive officers of Orange County, the City of Newburgh, and the Newburgh enlarged city school district. Now unless there's any objection, I'm going to suggest waiving the full reading of the notice of this public hearing and instead request that the full text of the notice of this public hearing be inserted into the record of this public hearing as Schedule A. The comments received today at this public hearing will be presented to the members of the agency at or prior to the meeting at which members of the agency will consider whether to approve the undertaking of the proposed project by the agency and by the granting of the agency of any final financial assistance in excess of one hundred thousand dollars with respect to the proposed project. Written comments. The notice of the public hearing indicated that written comments could be addressed to Sherry Fickers, executive director of this agency. I have received them. We are now going to invite Philippe Pierre to give remarks on his project. Philippe, so I think, yeah, just let Sean directly.
Can everyone hear me? Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Philippe Pierre. I am part of the development team for one oh four Washington Street. It's on Washington Street on the corner of Liberty and Washington, almost kitty-corner from Washington's headquarters. I want to thank Cher and the IDA for your time through this process. It's been incredibly helpful and really excited to be at this stage of the process. I was just going to give a little history about the project, what the proposed building is going to be, and just go over the benefits that we have applied for. So this was originally a hotel and in the eighties it burned down. And in the two thousand and tens it was taken back in foreclosure and ran by the City of Newburgh and basically left to rot until it was passed on to the Newburgh Community Land Bank, which had entertained several requests for proposals, including some adaptive reuse projects, but were never able to come to fruition. In twenty twenty, the Newburgh Community Land Bank put out a public RFP to which my partners and I responded to and we were awarded the project at the time. In twenty twenty-two, we demolished the property as it was quite unstable and bricks would fall onto the street during high wind events. And in twenty twenty-three, the project was essentially shovel-ready and obtained a building permit from the City of Newburgh. The macroeconomic conditions between the response to the RFP and today changed significantly, including costs and financing costs and construction costs and the project needed to be retooled to be economically feasible. The project that is proposed today and which is economically feasible is a new construction of five stories, which is mixed-use and mixed-income. We're proposing fourteen new residential units that will be income restricted to, on average, eighty percent of ALI. There will be a combination of some one-bedroom apartments, but mostly two-bedroom apartments, and eight thousand square feet of commercial space on the ground floor, some cottage industry units, and on the second floor, some office or co-working space. The benefits we have applied for include the pilot, which Cher described, the mortgage recording tax, and the sales tax abatement, which had previously been awarded to the project, but since there's been a change, we've had to amend our application. And I just want to state that we welcome the process that the IDA has put forth. Most recently, with the third-party report validation process that you'll hear from MRB in just a moment, which go over a cost-benefit analysis of the project, looks at whether or not the ask is reasonable. And in both cases, you'll find that that is indeed the case. There's also kind of a third layer on top of that, which is from the New York State Home and Community Renewal Division, which has underwritten this project and given it a green light. This, in the cycle of the development process, is one of the, is the final approval that's required to go to final underwriting with the hope of breaking ground later this year. That's the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now invite Connor from MRB Group to give his presentation on the reports that he's done for this project.
Great, so yeah, hi, everybody. I'm Connor Hartnett. I'm from a company called MRB Group. As Cher mentioned, we're going to talk about two studies that we have done, the cost-benefit analysis and the test of reasonableness analysis as it relates to the one oh four Washington project. Just to give you a little bit of background, MRB Group is a hundred-year-old firm. It started out primarily with engineering and architecture, but in two thousand and ten, we started the Smarter Local Gov Initiative, where basically we support communities all over upstate New York with various municipal planning and economic development services. In terms of cost-benefit analysis, our MRB's project team has worked on over three hundred of these studies across twenty-five states and for all different types of projects, from manufacturing projects, housing projects, which we're mostly talking about today, and everything in between. So like I mentioned, we're going to talk about, you know, for one oh four Washington first, our results of our analysis. So we'll start with our test of reasonableness. Really, we have sort of a dual mandate or a dual purpose of this study. We're trying to answer these two questions. Is the requested abatement necessary for the deal to be successful? And is the proposed abatement too generous for the developer? And in order to get to the answer of those two questions, we look at a couple different financial figures and compare that to benchmark market data. We look at debt service coverage ratios and we look at the return that the developer is projecting. So we get a functional Excel-based pro forma model from the developer and look at some of the assumptions that went into their financial model. So things that we look at, we look at the developer's sources of capital, their financing terms and conditions, we look at their construction budgets, we look at their operating revenues and expenses, their cash flows, and then, you know, importantly, we look at the returns that they are modeling and how they compare to our understanding of the market. So for one oh four Washington, some of the data that we looked at and discussed with the developer, the interest rates that they are representing, both for permanent and construction loans, loan-to-value ratios, capitalization rates, amortization period, debt service coverage ratio, and their returns, the equity dividend rate. And what we do is compare that to industry standard market data and see where the developer's assumptions align with that or if we can make some tweaks to their financial model so it comes into alignment. We also look at rental prices. We look at rental rates, operating expenses, escalation factors, hard and soft costs in the budget, again, to see how that aligns with our understanding of similar-type developments in the areas. So for one oh four Washington, our benchmark data comes from a source called RealtiRates.com in their investor survey, where they look at the equity dividend rate, which is essentially the return that the developer is modeling. It ranged from a minimum of about six percent to a maximum of about thirteen percent and an average of nine point eight percent. We also looked at the current cap rates of such properties that were about nine percent. And we found for this project that the developer's returns were within that range. So in terms of our determination on the test of reasonableness, because those benchmark data points that we looked at were aligned with our understanding of the market, we found that the requested assistance in terms of the pilot schedule and the developer's other requested exemptions, like their sales tax exemption and mortgage recording tax exemption, provide the developer with what we would consider a reasonable risk-adjusted return and the debt service coverage ratio is adequate to meet their requested financing. So in other words, we found that this project did meet our standard for reasonableness. The other analysis that we looked at is the cost-benefit analysis. So this is the economic impact of the project, both during the construction phase and ongoing throughout the operation of the facility. So in terms of our construction impact, that's driven by a developer's estimation of how much money they will be investing in local materials and local labor to construct their project. So the developer had indicated to us that they anticipate, I believe it was four million dollars in local spending on local materials and local labor, which we used as an input to our economic impact model. That level of investment corresponds to thirty-three direct jobs earning one point six million in wages. Those direct impacts will also create a number of indirect impacts. So you think about those construction workers spending their wages locally, business-to-business purchases, suppliers might need to make more purchases and make more hires to adjust for those direct jobs. So those are just some examples of potential indirect impacts. So in total, over the construction period, we estimate that this project will generate forty-one jobs earning two point one million in wages over the construction period. Our ongoing impacts, these are annual impacts to the city that are driven primarily by two sources. The household spending of tenants that are going to occupy those fourteen units. Those people are going to go out and spend money at the grocery store, at the doctor's office, buying new cars, things like that. That spending is going to lead to direct ongoing impacts. The other, the other driver of the ongoing impacts is employment at the site. So the developer estimated between five and ten jobs will be created at the site to occupy that commercial component of the project. So we also use that to model the ongoing impacts. And we have in total fifteen impact, or fifteen jobs earning about nine hundred and forty thousand in wages. And again, that's on an annual basis throughout the project. So in terms of the pilot schedule that the applicant is requesting, the pilot schedule is a fixed payment of eight thousand dollars per year, escalated at two percent for thirty years. So over the lifetime of the pilot, the pilot payments will total about three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, which is two hundred and forty-five thousand more than what this site would generate if the project did not move forward and the property was being taxed at its current value. So we also looked at the cost of the abatement, which is the difference between the, what the applicant would pay over the life of the pilot versus what they would pay if the project was taxed at its full assessment. And we estimated that to be two point four million over thirty years, which we'll use in our final benefit to cost ratio table here. So this is kind of a summary of the fiscal impacts of the project that we calculated, starting on the left with the fiscal benefits. There is sales tax associated with the employment during the construction phase and during the operation phase of the facility. Basically, those employees are going to be spending their wages on goods and services that are subject to a sales tax. So we estimate what that sales tax will be. About fourteen thousand dollars during the construction period and then about three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars over thirty years during the operation phase. We also have the increase in property tax revenue. Again, that's how much more the site will generate in property tax payments under the pilot opposed to under the, what it would generate in its current condition. Terms of the exemption, we talked about the pilot exemption of two point four million, but the applicant is also requesting a sales tax exemption and a mortgage recording tax exemption. So those numbers are there. This table on the right kind of summarizes the fiscal impacts in total. So we see the local cost primarily driven by the real property tax exemption of two point five million, local benefits of forty million, which is primarily driven by the new earnings of those jobs over thirty years to get to our final benefit to cost ratio here of sixteen point two nine. One way to think about that is every dollar of local cost, you're getting sixteen dollars and twenty-nine cents in local benefit. Likewise, for the tax benefit to cost ratio of zero point two three. So that's it for one oh four Washington.
Thank you. I will now open this public hearing for public comment at seven oh five PM. By way of operating rules, when I ask if there's a public comment, I will recognize one person at a time. I will first request comments from any elected official, elected or public officials which may want to speak. I will then open the hearing to the remainder of the public. Please wait to be recognized. And once recognized, please state your name and your address for the record. When everyone has had the opportunity to speak, I will conclude this public hearing and a record of this public hearing will be prepared and reviewed by the members of the agency in connection with the agency's consideration of the proposed project. Again, the purpose of this public hearing is to solicit public comment. We are not here to answer questions. However, we will during this public hearing consider questions if we have the information to answer the questions and there is sufficient time to consider such questions. I will now ask if there's anyone in attendance who wishes to comment on either the nature and location of the project facility or the proposed financial assistance being contemplated by the agency. I think we discussed this beforehand and we do the fact that we have a regular meeting to conduct after this. We're going to ask that your comments be around the two minutes each. So I did ask that if anyone had a comment to sign in here. Yep, and so we can begin with Ms. Yania, did you want to present? So we will start off with Yania. And Sean, they should use that microphone. So yep, just as a reminder to everyone that we try to make your comments to two minutes.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me? Yania Pearson. I live on Montgomery Street. Served on the IDA for two years and recently resigned. A deviation of thirty years is no small thing. We've voted in the past on deviations that were twelve years, fifteen years. So this is an extraordinary request in spite of the test of reasonableness. And I just said that one of the things we don't get to understand clearly in these presentations is what the real cost to the average taxpayer in Newburgh is. I understand when we use the word local, local jobs, that really isn't just Newburgh. That's the county. It's not just Newburgh. So what is the cost? Unfortunately, I don't have that information of how much the city actually costs. But I did one quick calculation. That'll be my final thought. Over a thirty-year period of time, the applicant would pay something around three hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars in taxes. I would pay something like four hundred and eighty thousand. would pay something like four hundred and eighty thousand on my little house. So I'll leave that as my closing comment. I'm not in agreement. Do not approve of the thirty-two and the thirty-year deviation.
Thank you. Next up, we have Judy Thomas.
Good evening. Thank you, everyone. It's nice and cozy in here. It's very cold outside. I really appreciated the presentation that Philippe gave regarding the history of the property and the process. I've been following this project for years through its trials and tribulations, through the Architectural Review Committee, over and over again. I think it's going to be a beautiful building. I like the purpose of it, but I do question the deviation of thirty-year pilot. As the previous speaker has stated, a single homeowner taxes over a thirty-year period would be much, much, much greater. And I do question the local economic impact. We're saying again, local jobs, local construction costs, but that could actually be locally even beyond Orange County. And it is just not the purview of the IDA, but I think it is my understanding that if it's affordable housing, that opens it up to the entire state perhaps. It does not give favor to the residents of Newburgh, of the city of Newburgh who need affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Michael LeBron. Did you want to comment? Next up, we have Marlon Thomas.
Hello, everybody. Happy New Year and good evening. So I actually, I'm going to second the lap of what was already said here. And some of you may know I was the chairperson here. Maybe this way better? All right. That's better. All right. So I said Happy New Year, everybody. As you may know, I was the chairperson at the IDA. I was part of the IDA for seven years, so I have a pretty good understanding of some of these things work. And I am going to second some of the things that were brought forth, which is the local impact. I want to question that more. I want to see when these studies happen. Yeah. Is it Newburgh specific? Are we talking county? Are we talking further than county? That's a big ask for a community that struggles financially. Also, this project, it did not start at a thirty-year request. So how do we end up at a thirty-year request? Are we going to set that precedent here? What does that mean for an IDA? What does that mean for the Newburgh IDA? Yeah. So also, when you were doing the assessment on the business, this is more of a question for the study, is this, and I have no understanding of, I believe it's going to be a creamery, right? I think that's going to be in place there. Is this going to be a seasonal job? Was that accounted for in the numbers? I'm not sure. So and I'm going to second a little bit of what Yania did, a little bit of math, and I would also pay more in that timeframe in my house. So these are the thoughts. And I think as IDA members, we should question things. That's it.
Thank you. We will now ask, I'm sorry, Michael, did you want to go or you want to wait till after?
After the presentation of the other.
Okay. So not for one oh four?
No.
Okay. Jacob, did you want to?
Hi, everybody. Jacob Kye. I'll be presenting in just a minute on the shop building. Wanted to take the opportunity to just emphasize how important, you know, I've been doing business in Newburgh as a developer for the last five and a half years and have had a home here since 2021. Just the challenge of developing anywhere in New York State is really tough, takes a lot. And then also how important this site is that Philippe's working on. One oh four Washington has an opportunity to extend what's already happening on Liberty Street and just make that whole, I see that as being like a core district for the city of Newburgh. And it's sitting there as a vacant site with bricks on it and it's in disrepair. And I just want to only focus on like how amazing it would be to get something done there after many decades of it being vacant and empty. And I think it's a beautiful project that would add a lot of value to the city. And so something happening there, you know, if it doesn't happen now, then like what's next? When? Are we talking another ten years, five years, twenty years till we actually decide to do something and get a project built? We have somebody who's here who's ready to do it. And I think that that's a good opportunity for the city. And I, you know, leave it to you guys to decide on what the benefits are or what the incentive package is that makes sense. But from a project level, I think it's a fantastic project and we have somebody who could get it done. So I'm in support of that.
Thank you. Do you have anyone else that wanted to comment on this project that didn't sign up for it? Okay. Now we'll move on to our next, oh, sorry, yes. We will close this public hearing at seven fifty. We will now begin the public hearing for the Liberty Street Apartments. Same thing I've read, but we'll read it over again. Hello, my name is Shreez Rickers and I am the Executive Director to the City of Newburgh Industrial Development Agency, the agency connected with the project, which is the subject of this public hearing. Today I am holding this public hearing to allow citizens to make a statement for the record relating to the involvement of the agency with a project, the proposed project for the benefit of Liberty Street Apartments LLC and New York Limited Liability Company, the company. The proposed project consists of the following. A, the acquisition of an interest in parcels of real property consisting of approximately one point three four four acres located at fifty dash seventy-two Liberty Street, Newburgh, the land. Two, the construction and improvement of a new mixed-use building on the property totaling approximately two hundred thousand square feet consisting of market-rate housing, affordable housing, commercial retail space, and a parking garage collectively known as the facility. And three, the acquisition and installation therein and thereon of related fixtures, machinery, equipment, and other tangible personal properties collectively, the equipment, the land, the facility, and the equipment hereinafter collectively referred to as the project facility. B, the granting of certain financial assistance within the meaning of section eight hundred and fifty-four fourteen of the Act with respect to the foregoing, including potential exemptions from certain sales and use taxes, real property taxes, real estate transfer taxes, and mortgage recording taxes collectively, the financial assistance. And C, the lease with an obligation to purchase or sale of the project facility to the company or such other person as may be designated by the company and agreed upon by the agency. The company will lease the building on the land to a company, which will be determined. I intend to provide general information on the agency's general authority and public purpose to provide assistance to this proposed project. I will then open the comment period to receive comments from all present who wish to comment on either the proposed project or the financial assistance contemplated by the agency with respect to the proposed project. Legal authorization and powers of the agency. City of Newburgh Industrial Development Agency, the agency is authorized and empowered by provisions of chapter one zero three zero of the nineteen sixty-nine laws, laws of New York, constituting Title One of Article eighteen A of the General Municipal Law, Chapter twenty-four of the Consolidated Laws of New York, as amended the Enabling Act and Chapter five seven seven of the nineteen eighty-two laws of New York, as amended, constituting section nine one three of said general municipal law, said chapter and the Enabling Act being hereinafter collectively referred to as the Act. Purpose of this meeting. Pursuant to section eight five nine eight two of the Act, prior to the agency providing any financial assistance as defined in the Act of more than one hundred thousand dollars to any project, the agency, among other things, must hold a public hearing pursuant to section eight five nine eight of the Act with respect to said project. Since the proposed financial assistance be provided by the agency with respect to the proposed project, we exceed one hundred thousand dollars, then prior to providing any financial assistance as defined in the Act of more than one hundred thousand dollars to the proposed project, the agency must hold a public hearing on the nature and location of the project facility and the proposed financial assistance be provided by the agency with respect to the proposed project. The company has requested the following financial assistance: a thirty-two year payment in blue tax agreement pilot at an estimated value of seven million one hundred seventy-three thousand three hundred seventy-one dollars. It is noted that the pilot is not consistent with the adopted uniform tax exempt policy of the agency. The agency has previously engaged a third-party municipal service firm, M R B Group, which assessed the proposed project and developed a written cost-benefit analysis which identified the following economic impact and benefits to the city of Newburgh from the proposed project. A, the construction phase of the project will create one hundred fifty-eight direct indirect jobs that will generate approximately seven million three hundred sixty-six thousand five hundred and ninety-five dollars in wages. B, the project will result in fifty-two permanent jobs from new household spending and onsite operations, earning approximately two million four hundred eighty-eight thousand one hundred fifty-three dollars in wages on an annual basis. C, Orange County will benefit from additional one-time sales tax revenue of forty-eight thousand three hundred forty-three dollars associated with construction wages earned during the construction phase, additional sales tax revenue of two hundred fifty-nine thousand four hundred sixty-three dollars related to new wages earned from permanent jobs and additional sales tax revenue of seven hundred fifty-two thousand five hundred twelve dollars related to new household spending. D, over the course of the thirty-two years, the project will generate an increase of four million three hundred ninety-seven thousand four hundred sixty-seven dollars in additional property tax revenue on the current taxes for Orange County, the city of Newburgh, and the Newburgh Enlarge City School District. In addition, part of the financial assistance requested by the company includes a request to the agency, the pilot request, to enter into a payment in blue tax agreement, the proposed pilot agreement, the terms of which will deviate from the existing agency uniform tax exempt policy, the policy. Pursuant to section eight seven four four of the Act and in accordance with the policy, prior to taking final action on the pilot request for a deviation from the policy, the agency must adopt a resolution setting forth with respect to the proposed deviation, A, the amount of the proposed tax exemption, B, the amount and nature of the proposed pilot, and C, indicating the reasons for the proposed deviation. At its regular meeting held on December sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, the agency approved a letter setting forth and writing the reasons for deviation from such policy and notifying by certified mail, return receipt requested or an electronic correspondence with a red receipt, the affecting local taxing jurisdictions of the proposed deviation from the policy and the reasons therefore. This hearing is also available to hear public comments from those affected local taxing jurisdictions regarding the proposed deviation from the policy. The Executive Director of the agency caused the notice of this public hearing to be, A, mailed on January sixth, twenty twenty-five to the Chief Executive Officers of Orange County, the City of Newburgh, and the Newburgh Enlarge School District, and B, published on December twenty-second, twenty twenty-four in the Times held record and newspaper of general circulation available to the residents of the city of Newburgh, Orange County, New York. In addition, the Executive Director of the agency caused notice of this public hearing to be posted on December nineteenth, twenty twenty-four on the agency's website and also on the public bulletin board located at City Hall, eighty-three Broadway, Newburgh, New York, and C, the Executive Director posted a notice of the public hearing to the agency's Facebook page and Instagram account on January fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. Additionally, the Executive Director of the agency caused a letter notifying about the proposed deviation from the uniform tax exempt policy of the agency to be mailed by certified mail, return receipt requested or electronic correspondence with a red receipt on January sixth, twenty twenty-five to the Chief Executive Officers of Orange County, the City of Newburgh, and the Newburgh Enlarge School District. Now unless there's any objection, I'm going to suggest waiving the full reading of the notice of the public hearing and instead request that the full text of the notice of this public hearing be inserted into the record of this public hearing as Schedule A. The comments received today at this public hearing will be presented to the members of the agency at or prior to the meeting, at which members of the agency will consider whether to approve the undertaking of the proposed project by the agency and the granting by the agency of any financial assistance in excess of one hundred thousand dollars with respect to the proposed project. Written comments. The notice of this public hearing indicated that written comments could be addressed to Shreez Rickers, Executive Director of the agency. I have received them. We will now invite Andrew Schreiber to, oh, sorry, yeah, Andrew, yeah. Andrew Schreiber to give his presentation on his project.
What do you think the best place for this?
You can block me in.
Good evening, everybody. Can everybody hear me? Okay, great. Thank you, everyone, for showing up tonight. It's a pleasure to be here. I'm here to talk about fifty dash seventy-two Liberty Street, AKA One Lafayette, which I believe is a very important project for the city of Newburgh and its continued growth. This project represents two and a half years of hard work by myself and my team to bring this to this moment today where we're here to present both to the IDA and to the public regarding a project that will provide a hundred and forty-five units, of which a hundred and twenty-seven are affordable, by which I mean income bands between thirty and eighty percent of AMI will be covered. What that colloquially means, and you know, these are sort of averages, is that one bedrooms might start around nine hundred and go up to about fifteen hundred. So we have a very nicely graded project that's meant to service or be available to individuals that represent various economic strata. In addition to that, there will be eighteen units of market, so that's a total of a hundred and forty-five units. So again, a project that seeks to integrate people across socioeconomic background with the hope that through living in a, in a community that is this building, we are engendering connections across those stratas and bridging a more strong, a stronger community. In addition to that, I'll note that there is eleven thousand square feet of retail, which will be centered on Liberty Street and continue to pour work on the, or how shall I say, bridge the progress that has already happened on Liberty Street and provide additional spaces for entrepreneurs and businesses to open up shops, to service the residents of this area. We have sixty new residents in the Foundry. There's another sixty or so residents happening with the Kearney project on Colden Street. And then in addition, you'll have a hundred and forty-five residences here. So certainly there will be a lot of economic activity as a result of that, those projects and this potential project. We want to make sure that there are businesses there to offer services to those residents. In addition, the project will have a underground parking garage with forty-five units. It will have solar on top, our hope, and we're working through this now, though it's not been finalized, is that we will also be able to do geothermal heating and cooling. And so the building will actually be quite energy and efficient. The hope is that the solar will actually cover the cost of the geothermal. And so in some ways, it could be a heating and cooling energy neutral building. That has not yet been fully worked out, but that is the hope. It is a, we are incentivized to do that, obviously. It helps to control costs, but it has not yet been totally worked out. I'm going to leave the sort of economic talk to Connor. I want to not steal his wind, but I just want to say that this is a fundamental project. We are in a housing crisis, as you guys well know. Housing is desperately needed. This lot has been empty since, I believe, nineteen eighty-one, when the two or three factories there burned down. It represents an excellent opportunity to continue to infill these vacant lots, bring density back to Newburgh. I just want to note that I heard one public comment about I just wanna note that, uh, I heard one public comment about, uh, affordable housing and that it is open statewide. I would just, uh, augment that by saying, uh, while your housing law requires that we, uh, offer and review any applicant, we are able to advertise these units locally, which we intend to do, right? So to try and catch as many residents that exist in the city of Newburgh that may benefit from this housing. So our orientation will be to ensure that, uh, we're able to attract residents that are already here that could benefit from this housing. I'd also like to just note that, uh, this is a thirty-two-year pilot, so we are here, uh, not only for a public hearing, but for a deviation hearing. I'll also note that we, um, are requesting that this pilot not only cover the improvements, i.e. the building, but also the land.
Okay, thank you. We will now invite Connor from M R B, uh, M R B Group to, uh, discuss the cost-benefit analysis and the test of reasonableness.
Sorry. Uh, so for this project, I'm gonna start, uh, here with the test of reasonableness. Let me go back to our sort of dual mandate, why we do the test of reasonableness. Is this incentive necessary for the deal to, to go through and be successful? Is the proposed, uh, abatement too generous? So we're still answering those questions in our study, um, for this project, but our approach was a little bit different than what we typically do for a test of reasonableness, um, compared to some of the other projects. And that is because, um, as Andrew mentioned, you know, the bulk of the, uh, residential units for, um, this project are going to be income restricted. The project is going to be financed primarily through New York State Housing Financing Authority, or HFA, um, and other state and local grants that have their own minimums, um, for a lot of the financial indicators that we typically benchmark against market data. So we, we're gonna leave that determination to HFA, and we sort of adapted our approach to the test of reasonableness, um, to accommodate that. So what did we actually test for this project? We looked at the debt service coverage ratio. Does the project meet the financing conditions as stipulated by, uh, the Housing Financing Finance Authority? Um, we looked at the deferred developer fee test. So the, um, the bulk of the return for the developer in this project is gonna come through the developer's fee. Um, so we looked at, can the developer fee reasonably be paid out with, uh, the, uh, free cash flow during the HFA's fifteen-year compliance period? And I'll talk a little bit about that. I'll talk a little more about that in a second. Then we also looked at the excess cash flow test. So is there any excess free cash flow beyond what is required to meet the above two tests? And that was sort of our framework of the analysis for this project. So in terms of the, the debt service coverage ratio, um, HFA requires a minimum of one point one five debt service coverage ratio for each year of the project's operations. In review of the projections provided by the developer, um, we noted that they do in fact meet this requirement. So then we looked at the deferred developer fee. So, um, the HFA and some of the investors for this project will, um, require that the deferred developer fee be paid out of the, um, project's free cash flows over fifteen years. So we looked at if that met the requirement. And it did. So we looked at, so the final test was the excess cash flow test. Basically, we looked at after the deferred developer fee is paid, um, what's left over? Is there excess cash flow, um, beyond what is needed to achieve those first two tests that we talked about? And in our initial review of the initial pilot submitted by, um, the developer, we found that there were actually excess cash flows, um, beyond what was necessary. So we did a little bit of back and forth with the developer, and they came back, um, early December with a revised pilot that diverted a lot of those excess cash flows into additional pilot payments. So the difference between the initial pilot and the amended pilot ended up adding, I think, around two million dollars more in pilot payments for the taxing jurisdictions. So given that, uh, amended pilot that we got, we've determined that the developer meets this excess cash flow test. So again, you know, after we received the amended pilot abatement terms and reviewed the project through some of the parameters set by HFA, we've ultimately determined that this project does meet, um, you know, our test of, of reasonableness. So in terms of the cost-benefit analysis, um, the developer indicated, um, about seventeen point four million dollars in local spending in the county on local material and labor. So we have our construction impacts of a hundred and fifty-eight jobs and seven point four million in wages. Again, those, those impacts are assessed at the county level, um, for construction. And then in terms of the ongoing jobs, right, the, again, the two drivers of those ongoing jobs are the new household spending from tenants that are gonna occupy the project and also, um, employment at the retail, um, portions of the project. And those, these ongoing impacts are assessed at the city level. So we determined, um, fifty-two jobs will be created on an annual basis in the city, earning two point five million in wages as a result of, uh, this project. So in terms of the, the pilot schedule, um, the applicant is requesting a fixed payment pilot of a hundred and eight thousand dollars in the first year. That's escalated at three percent until year seventeen. Then that jumps up another fifty percent, escalated, uh, three percent per year thereafter until, uh, year twenty-six, where it does another fifty percent jump. Um, and then it's escalated three percent a year until, until thirty-two years. So in total, the pilot abatement, or the pilot schedule here will generate eight point four million dollars in property tax revenue over thirty-two years, which is eight million more than what the site would generate absent the project. In terms of the fiscal cost, which again is the difference between the requested pilot abatement schedule and what the property would pay in full taxes on the full assessment, um, we've calculated that to be seven point one million over thirty-two years. So in, in summary of the fiscal impacts, um, we have the fiscal benefits of the project. So sales tax during the construction period, about fifty thousand dollars. Sales tax during the operation phase is about two hundred and sixty thousand dollars over, again, over thirty-two years. Sales tax associated with new household spending, uh, about seven hundred and fifty thousand. And then we talked about the increase in property tax revenue of about eight million dollars more than what the site would generate in its current state. In terms of the exemptions, this applicant, um, as part of their amended, uh, pilot request, also removed their request for a sales tax exemption and a mortgage recording tax exemption and will not seek those through the IDA. So the, the cost to fiscal government is, or to local government is the pilot exemption of seven point two million. And then we have our cumulative impact table here on the right. We talked about most of these numbers here, um, but the final benefit to cost ratio, eighteen point nine-nine. Um, and then the tax benefit ratio here is one point two-six for this project.
I have to do this one.
Thank you. Um, Connor, just wanted to ask, um, if you would like the introduction that you provided for the previous hearing, uh, for one oh-four Washington, where you discussed, um, what M R B Group does and, um, how and why you do what you do, um, if you would like that incorporated into the transcript for this hearing.
No, that's okay.
Okay, we will, um, we will now open this, uh, hearing.
Sure. Before we open the hearing, I just have a question that I wanna clarify with Connor and maybe Andrew, uh, just to make sure for the public and that I'm reading this correctly. So the increase in property tax revenue over thirty-two years is seven point nine-eight million dollars, and the value of the abatement, seven point one million dollars.
Yeah, that, I mean, that, so that, that's the abatement. That's what's related to the abatement, the increase, and then you see the exemption there, seven point two.
Right. So the amount of property tax revenue generated would be greater than the value of the abatement?
Yeah. So the number of property, it's hard to see, but the total value of, of, uh, pilot payments under the proposed schedule is eight point four million in total. Those are the pilot payments.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Um, I will now open this public hearing up for public comment at seven thirty-nine P M. By way of operating rules, when I ask if there is a public comment, I will recognize one person at a time. I will request comments from any elected or public official which may want to speak. I will then open the hearing to the remainder of the public. Please wait to be recognized. Once recognized, please state your name and your address for the record. When everyone has had the opportunity to speak, I will conclude this public hearing, and a record of this public hearing will be prepared and reviewed by the members of the agency in connection with the agency's consideration of the proposed project. Again, the purpose of this public hearing is to solicit public comment. We are not here to answer questions. However, we will during this public hearing consider questions if we have the information to answer the questions, and there is sufficient time to consider such questions. I will now ask if there's anyone in attendance who wishes to comment on either the nature and location of the project facility or the proposed financial assistance being contemplated by the agency with respect to the proposed project. I'll just go down the list that I have here, um, and we'll just let me know. So, uh, Yana, did you want to comment on this project?
Yeah, Yanni Ah Pearson, two oh-four Montgomery Street. So the, every time I hear this project, I'm like, yeah, it sounds good. You know, so it's, it, it does sound like it's, it has some potential. And at the same time, I still would ask you not to approve a thirty-two-year deviation. My understanding is that requests like this are often made to the C council, to the city, to decide on whether or not there will be a pilot. My concern, every time I hear about jobs, I know that a lot of those jobs will not stay here in Newburgh. So a lot of the job impacts, there's no guarantee, and there's also difficult to even require, therefore, to monitor that there will be an economic impact for the people of, of Newburgh. When I think about and I hear about all the large amounts of money that will go into businesses just to develop the project, most of them are not in the city of Newburgh. The IDA has the potential to change that formula, where there's more economic development here, so that when developers come in and need this kind of assistance, that there's actually, actually, Newburgh is in a better position to meet a lot of those needs and therefore directly be impacted by those benefits. Right now, we're not there. My concern, this is, will not be the last thirty-year, thirty-two-year deviation request. It's probably just the beginning. So my question is, where and when will, how will the IDA continue to build on economic development and, and ask developers to go somewhere else for what they need to do to these wonderful projects? Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Judy Thomas, would you, would you like to?
Uh, I'll, I'll be, uh, skip, I'll skip to the end of the short term.
Sure. Uh, Michael Lebron?
Good evening, everyone. Michael Lebron, two seventy-nine Grand Street. So I have a list of about nine things here. I try to skip to them quickly, but off the top, I have a few reservations about the first project, and I am opposed to the second project as it's currently configured. Number one, why is the pilot extended virtually into perpetuity? Uh, my understanding is it's not only a thirty-year pilot, but at the end of that pilot, the developer is gonna expect a second one. And this seems to be, to be shortchanging current city taxpayers. It's my understanding also that the IDA is supposed to be assisting businesses, particularly those that are labor-intensive. I don't see how this project fits this criteria. If you could explain, better than what has been explained so far, how it does. There's been argued that this project significantly increases the amount of tax revenue that the city is currently getting from the site, but wouldn't a fully market-rate project get double this revenue? I've noticed that, um, I think fifteen, fourteen units are market rate, and the rest is subsidized housing. It seems like it's an eighty, twenty project and reverse. Usually eighty percent is market rate and twenty percent is subsidized housing. This project provides for only fourteen long-term jobs, at least from the study that I saw dated December sixth. Shouldn't a project of this size generate at least forty-five? Uh, the problem of city residents being prioritized is already addressed. I won't go into that. Uh, and then, uh, I think, I've heard that seventy-five percent of the jobs must be, uh, city of Newburgh residents. I don't see how this is practical. Even if the city had plans in place to protect its immigrant labor force from the alleged having federal action, which it does not, and I know it doesn't, 'cause I had a meeting with the mayor on precisely this issue, and he doesn't want to go near it. Besides, uh, the chief of staff does not live in the city, and to the best of my knowledge, neither does the city manager still, in spite of the law, uh, that states otherwise. So either you enforce the law for everyone, or you rescind the law and get rid of it. Uh, and then here's a question that's a little.
I believe your, I believe your two minutes has expired. Thanks.
I just have two more for you.
You can submit further comments in writing, which the board.
I'll be submitting, uh, further comments in writing. I have one article here that I'm gonna give to you now, Cher, from, uh, The Real Deal, that argues that African-American and Hispanic people prefer to go to ownership models where they can have, build equity instead of low-income houses.
Thank you. Thank you, Michael. Um, next up, we have, uh, I hope you'd like to.
All right. So a lot of what I was gonna bring forward was already said. The concern of a thirty-year pilot in my time in the IDA, that wasn't a thing. It means a lot, um, for me to actually understand these things as they're happening. I grew up here, not too far from here. Um, I'm gonna go into more of a personal thing, side tangent, because a lot of what my concerns have already been said. I'm gonna second pretty much everything. Growing up here, I didn't know, but I was curious as to how things were happening and how my surroundings was shaped. So I took it upon me to actually get to know a little bit better. And I can actually see when things are not necessarily in the favor of the community that I take part. And my opinion on a thirty-year pilot in an IDA that hasn't done that before is not something that should be done. So that, that's basically where I stand. So, uh, lastly, there are, and there still is, openings, open slots in this board. And a quick search in the city social medias and communication outlets, there really isn't a post about it. I believe that people from the community that are independent from working in the city should have a presence here. Yeah, that's basically it.
Thank you. Um, next up, we have Jacob. Oh, sorry, Judy.
No, go, there's Jacob. Go ahead.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll keep my comments really brief on this. I think that we have a really capable team that can do a meaningful project on a vacant piece of land that's probably the most important site in the city of Newburgh right now, just in the way that it ties in, one of them, for sure, just in the way it ties in what's happening on the Bury Street. And that is a site that has been owned by an individual for a long time, and it's been really tough to, I don't know how it gets unlocked in another way. And I think that any project of scale that's going to require the investment that these guys are making requires support. And I just want to say I support the project from a design and what they're proposing, and leave it to you guys to figure out what is the right incentive. But I think that they, you know, Andrew and the team could get it done, and it would have a really positive impact to have that building versus a vacant lot.
Thank you. I'll have Judy Thomas.
I think this will be a very good project. I have been watching it from the vacant lot that's been sitting there for a very long time to the initial drawings and through all of the zoning and ARC reviews. With that said, I do have a problem with a 30-year pilot on this project. I think that the assessment from the team here maybe is missing out on some numbers that I feel we might want to look at, which is the income generated from 140, 150 units in this space over the course of a 15-year pilot, for instance. So I see that there might be significant income from this, but I also see for the city a problem that would be a lot of increased services that will be needed to be done. So we're looking at sanitation and fire department and policing that is going to cost the city money in this very dense area. And then if the project does generate more income than projected, does the city have any means to change its parameters and maybe be able to get back some of that pilot tax exemptions? If that's understandable. Thank you.
Thank you. We now have Dennis Grant.
Forsyth Place. I think the 32 years is a no. The 140, I believe it was 147 units, with 45 underground parking, and just the burden of what the other residents there and their parking requirements, that's going to be a dense parking neighborhood as far as finding parking, because I see that they're laying out parking spots now. And when you add another 147 units, which will probably be 120-plus vehicles, that's a problem, especially with the foundry having 60 units as well. The other thing is, we have, well, we have good, affordable property between Albany and New York City. The properties that we have on the east side, the properties we have in that area are good properties. And leveraging them, or I should say suppressing taxes for 32 years is too generous. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll ask for Sue Sullivan.
Sue Sullivan, Montgomery Street, City of Newburgh. I want to first say that clearly we need better housing throughout New York State, and so I applaud you for coming up with a plan to do that. However, I personally do not feel it should be done on the backs of taxpayers, both in the city of Newburgh as well as New York State, because not only is this project asking for incentives from the city, it's also in line to get state grants, also in line to get federal tax credits. And I just think that if you're talking about 14 jobs, what was the number? 14 new jobs. The IDAs were created to incentivize businesses to come create a tax base. It was not created to support huge housing projects. And I think it's a dangerous precedent. I'm very curious as to the response from the school district, because any deviation needs to be approved by the school district, is my thought and experience. And I just have to say that the way that this board has been constituted over the last several months is not a good look. And the fact that you have four city employees, three of whom are residents here, one who doesn't even live here, who's chairing the board, is a really big issue that puts into question all of this for me. So I do support good housing projects, just not funded on the backs of people who live here.
Thank you. And is that the conclusion of all comments?
I'd have to respond to a couple things more, but I could also respond.
Yep, this is just for then two. Okay. So then at 7:56, I will conclude this public hearing. Thank you for attending. Afterwards, we will jump into our regular IDA board meeting afterwards. Maybe we'll just give a few minutes so that we can pack up.